...in Mercy City, council gathered today is November the 13th and then the 6th. Very quickly, when I talked to Mr. Roble, I turned the video in as just earlier before of a council discussion regarding our relationship with Washington University. And just sort of to, if you will, sort of tee up the discussion, I'll sort of, I will repeat some of the comments that I made in the previous meeting regarding our partnership with Washington University. And as I've said to university leadership, so I think there are times where these relationships, we sort of have to have an adjustment or at least have an opening of those things that concern us. And over the past few years, I think it would be clear for most members of council that we've got more phone calls regarding construction issues that have gone on on both ends of campus. Parking issues, variance requests for different types of co-pot issues, and then of course, the again, the number of police and fire calls we get for residents who are not taxpayers. I think, as I said, one of my conversations with Roble, Washington folks, every now and then we just get tired. And I think this may be part of overseeing not just this fiscal quarter, I think that we do just get tired. And I know as a former first ward council member that Washington takes up a big deal of primary, the first and central ward council member's time. And I think that's something that we've all got to weigh in. Also, though, I want to come back and say that this is not a session to simply air agreements about Washington University. They're a good neighbor, they're a very, they're integral to the fabric of our community. And what we're talking about tonight is how they're better, they're probably towards each other. And I think that we, as maybe you know, we had a question of course, but some time ago, they didn't see much light of day. And now it is, there are recommendations in there. So I hope that that report will frame part of our discussion tonight and give us a pathway forward that Mr. Roble would like to talk about prior to the conclusion of the meeting. And as I said to my colleagues, just open disclosure, everyone, I need to be here at 8:00 tonight. So I hope that I write that before this car will take over. And by the way, for our audio visual gentleman, thank you again for coming tomorrow night and of course, to repeat and to our city manager as well. So I'll turn it over to any of my colleagues who might either ask questions or be set up or make statements so that we can move this dialogue forward. For the citizens who are agreeing here, the next study session is actually not a participatory conversation between you and us, it's a discussion amongst council members. So we really don't entertain the question or comments from the, thank you for coming, we appreciate it.
Thank you to everyone in attendance this evening. I will attempt to be free, I'll play with the paraphrase with a daunting task. Ultimately, as I have stated in the past, the residents, the taxpayer residents of University City are underwriting the higher education of Washington University students. This evening's study session is a continuation of a process that began in July 2015 when the University City, Washington University Task Force submitted their final study to the University City Council. A comprehensive and thorough study that's made sixty-two pages and addresses very important issues. Washington University owned property in University City is for the most part a tax exempted. And those tax exempt properties is further undue burdens on our taxpayer residents to compensate for those tax losses. One paramount question looms, and that is, what is the impact on University City by Washington University students, Washington University owned properties? What impact this has had upon the abilities of University City to provide necessary but essential services to our residents? I would recommend a three-step approach around this study. I believe that Mr. Roble has made a strong face for the necessity of an impact study. Therefore, I would suggest that we allow Mr. Roble to proceed with this impact study with a few caveats. First, as Roble has chosen an organization which has experience in conducting, impact studies is specifically investigating the relationship between the substantially not large, non-proper entity and the impact it has on the municipal area in which it operates. As well, if he is a council, should have some information on any firmly chooses with examples of the work they have performed. And, excuse me, and that this agency being independent of Washington University, a study completed by Washington University would be a direct complement of ours. Secondly, my understanding that Washington University has agreed to pay the principal cost of this study. And we will provide the agency a copy of the original University City, Washington University report to be used as a baseline for their study. Most importantly, that we charge the agency looking at all the questions posed in the original study. Other council, a council discusses other questions in areas of concern that would need to be researched and investigated, and those questions will be provided as part of the impact study as well. Further, that we charge the agency performing the impact study to advise the University City concerning any issues, we may have been left to consider, especially should there be other issues which impact on University City. That any impact in the study may be completed within ninety days, and most importantly, once we have received the results of the impact study. And it should be warranted, we form a task force or a standing committee to address the recommendations given of the impact study. Secondly, there are some issues that we could begin to address, issues that require more immediate attention. These are things that we have direct control over, including example, those, for instance, our codes, enforcement of our codes, and a discussion concerning zoning ordinances, parking and occupancy requirements. Although non-occupant apartments are eligible for exemption from a number of taxes which commission outlets are authorized to levy, an exception is the privileged license tax. The privileged license tax is an excess tax levying on the privilege of conducting particular trade or business. We could act upon this in two ways. One, we could create a new privileged license category catered around the specific activities of particular non-profitous organizations. And two, we could also levy existing privileged license tax upon non-profitous organizations based upon their quasi-commercial activities that other for-profit entities are already taxed for. Also, we should look again at the plans for Parkview Gardens neighborhood sustainable public plan and reevaluate those. And I would encourage a discussion with my colleagues on all these issues. I think it warrants early discussion on our part to look at some of these issues while the impact study is in the works. And finally, I would encourage this council to submit a series of questions to our superintendent city manager, to Mr. Mulvaney, per his legal opinion, and to have the opportunity to discuss the opinions of Mr. Mulvaney in closed session. I would prefer, and I know of others who may feel similarly and respectfully request, that our city attorney now provide any legal opinions during this study session while we are just exploring approaches, but rather wait to give us a more researched legal opinion which could be further discussed in closed session if necessary, which may have a bearing on any type of contractual agreements. Just a lot of the councils will bring that take legal advice and consider legal ramifications of the property. Thank you.
Ms. Carr? Thank you. So I'd like to take up the issue of what we can do for ourselves. And I've been told, I've told you a lot, a lot of you this story. I've been married on this forty-two years, and I've been in marriage counseling more than several times. And the first time I went, I told the counselor that my husband needed to change. And she looked at me and she said, "No, you cannot change him, you can only change yourself. And he might then change as a result of your change." And that is, I think, the position that we're in right now. So if we change, we change our behaviors, and I'll describe that shortly, it's highly likely that we're going to be very much more happy with the relationship. For instance, we have recently changed our book because Washington University requested it be for the code of parking. And as I had said to you all the time, that's roughly only a third of the parking that should have been provided. So I think that enforcing the existing code is really paramount to Thomas anything we do. And that goes for parking, that goes for occupancy, especially where we have buildings that we're not sure whether they're really apartments or dormitories. I know we have some code that says not more than three unrelated people may reside in the same residence. And I have heard of that situation, that situation where there are more than three being there. So do we need to look at, do we have the proper code for dormitories or classifying some of these as dormitory? What kind of fees do we charge, what kind of inspections? I mean, it's a foregone conclusion right now that we are the bedroom for Washington University. And so we should at least be regulating that as well, as closely as we regulate the normal residence kinds of things. And then, then I think that we need to take a look at any other things that we have made a change. My colleague mentioned the Parkview Gardens plan. Yeah, people have said, you know, what do you think Washington was going to be doing in ten or twenty years? And I can tell you for a fact that what they were going to be doing is what's laid out in that Parkview Gardens plan. So if you look carefully at that plan, you will see that they have proposed closing Vernon. And that would have made that whole section of Ward Two, roughly a third, a third of Ward Two, would have been a private residential enclave of Washington University. That should never happen. And I clearly it will not happen now because Vernon is, for my word, is straight shot from the west side to the east side. With, you know, with the trolley and everything else, you get there and all of it's pretty far north for some of us in the South Side. Vernon would become a more of a threat factor. So I think we need to look at that, we need to look at what was also written into Parkview Gardens in terms of, you know, what they had planned for not just our city, but what they had planned for the city. And to that end, I've given you some articles. And the one on the back is pretty important. I actually asked a lot of people, what do you think that, because I've been told, so I didn't really want to bring a pilot at this point in terms of that's what we should be seeing. But I've been told that if Washington University considered a pilot, they have to consider it for all three municipalities in which they are located. And so I began to ask her, what is it that they do for the three municipalities that they're located? And we'll clearly know for our city that it's ninety thousand dollars. And then the parking, the proceeds from some parking units, and it totals to about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars as used in in this plan. And I asked, well, what does play there, because play keeps care of the unimpropriated area of their main campus. And they get roughly three hundred thousand dollars right now for providing fire, like the MS, just fire, the MS, some of those calls we will be called out for. And again, we get ninety, what does the city get? Well, the city gets a earnings tax. They're a classy city, they're only two, Missouri, St. Louis, and Kansas City. That means that everyone who works there lives there, it's one percent of their income. And the article I gave you was actually published in 2010. It says Washington chips in to protect the city's earnings. And I have highlighted on the back of that article, and it wasn't much of a donation, that they gave five thousand dollars for this campaign. And it says many, but not all, Washington University employees pay the earnings tax. While the main campus travels the city line, some of the university's highest paid employees, the doctors and medical school staff, work in the central western. What's Washington University state in the earnings tax debate? If the earnings taxes repeal, cities only have to look for other ways to improve the revenue, such as, say, asking tax exempt institutions like Washington for some type of payment in lieu of taxes. So just by virtue of the fact that Washington University employs many people within the city, they make a substantial amount of revenue. That doesn't, that doesn't account for the investments that may be corted or even anything that they're making in what we call the East Loop, which is one of the larger TIP areas, including the TIP MAX. So we're, they're actually bringing the city by the, and so I, I'm going to go back again to kind of a family situation. When you have children and you raise them, obviously, they're all, and to each child, you give what they need, and that is the case here. So we do not, they have not brought incubators here, they have not brought businesses here, they brought their bedrooms here. And so we must then consider what it is that we need from them. And again, it's, you know, it's us talking. So I think that our work really revolves around, around this enforcing our code. Looking at the code and making sure that it adequately covers the issues that we have now. Most of the, but many of the properties were not acquired in the latter two thousand seven. And then one more really, really important issue, to know what the future is, and that's a really difficult thing to do. Except that I can tell you that more property will be acquired, and that property, like in the city, can, please thank Brian for posting that article on Next STL. One of the aldermen in the city is now complaining because the properties we acquired are not not only the earnings tax, but the properties we acquired, so they're more valuable properties. Well, we have some pretty valuable, you know, properties here too. And so, you know, so that's what we're looking towards, that, those are the things we have to think about. When you take those off the tax forms, more and more of the people who are least able to pay will continue to subsidize the essential services for those non-proper that are not paying and may be insurance. The other article that I have attached was one that gives me inspiration. Every three days, I remind myself of this, the state officials reject Washington University's plan for mortgages. It's very simple for them. If you do not provide the right to serve parking, you may not increase the number of beds. And so they are following your code. And I, and I had a lot of people who wrote me and cheered, cheered the action at the time, and then said, "Why aren't you doing this?"
Alex Trucic? I would see, I'll send some comments over, turn over this to Roble, over your, your live log. Some more things, I, I actually want to look through a number of things. I'm not going to start with this. I think that following up on Mr. Trucic's comments, I think some of his comments make sense. I think some of them make probably a little bit more within the purview of the city manager. I'm not sure if ninety days is probably, I think a consultant should report in ninety days on something that you may not be quite the timeframe that they're working at. Or the part is, I think that the idea of the city and Washington University having shared investment in this report is good because I think that neither party is going to be totally satisfied with the outcome of the report likely. And if you have that investment in it, make sure that people have an understanding of what this all entails. I also would say that Tim's comment about the, I clearly would assume that the current study that was done by the city's, that the task force would be made available to the consultant. I don't necessarily consider it to be a baseline. I don't think consultants would want it to be a baseline. I think they wanted to say, we understand where you come from, and now here's where we're going to go moving forward. I couldn't agree more with Ms. Carr regarding the enforcement of the code. I think in my view, as on the council, we have had a quiet number of requests over time that ask for exceptions to the code for different projects. And I think probably our neighbor knows that those probably aren't coming very easily as they have. And that, I also believe that this is an opportunity for us to merge two major goals of, I would obviously, this administration, which would be the Washington relationship, but also that the olive on settlement project, where we have ten million dollars pouring into the third ward and five hundred dollars on the long olive. And I think we have all made no secret about the fact that ten million dollars to help secure housing in the third ward and enough of the businesses along olive, that five hundred isn't going to go very far. So the more ways we can find to leverage that money, whether that is us using the money and then banking it, maybe the ones us using are that less superior to Washington coming in to help Seattle. These are ways for us to find new leverage tactics to help us make those dollars go much further. And then I also would like to, I would just to consider as we move forward, we're doing some of our public works projects that clearly are designed to benefit, and probably in this case, it would be Washington University. I think the idea, the, a clear idea of cost sharing, whether we, you know, we have so many students who live in the Parkview Gardens area, and we're doing some work on after walkway. The question that we have sort of right up front, okay, you know, there's not a lot of our taxpayer residents who are using after walkway. There are an awful lot of Washington students that are, how should we be paying for this project? And again, it's just a change of thought process as we move forward. So as we peel this under the back, there are a lot of different directions for us to go in, and consultants sort of give us an idea of what are the, what are the most efficient ways to get where we go. Mr. Ledman? Thank you, Mr. Ledman. Coming into somewhat fresh eyes to this, certainly Councilman, or the Councilman McCar, and others have done, he's been significant to the mayor and the key, this is certainly the relationship that we are going to have, Washington's not going anywhere, University City's not going anywhere. So we have to make it work. In my conversation with one fellow council members and others, it seemed like there are two issues, and now kind of framing it's a tactical strategic. The tactical being more, as Councilman Hales and others have articulated, the parking issues. The issues created by construction for residents, kind of the everyday nagging kinds of things. Councilman Stolson and I do not necessarily bear the plents of that, but certainly we feel we're paying, it's a part of this community. Councilman McCar referenced that we are the bedroom of Washington University, based on how much recent I've had with some friends in the first ward and after night party. It seems we go to the bathroom too a little bit, but how do we, part of this, how do we address those issues? Those everyday kind of living, working issues? And then to Councilman Trucic and Mayor Pro, and the Councilman McCar's point about the strategic, how do we, how do we craft an ask? And I've read the report and other documents, and I don't know, I could have missed something, I'm not the researcher Councilman McCar, Councilman Hales are, but have we ever come forward with an ask, here's what we want? That's more rhetorical question at this point, unless someone has the answer. But to me, that seems, and I've heard some great ideas here, that seems a part of this process. And I don't know if that's something that would be fruit of the consulting process, I don't know. But it seems like that is the one thing we need in a strategic level that may not entirely be for us.
I don't care either way, you know. And now we, but I, I agree with Ms. Carr that looking inward to ourselves and what we can do is an important thing. And I don't necessarily see that as a relationship with Washington issue because that's what we should have been doing on the wall. That's our own, if we're not enforcing our own rules, why do we have, if we're not following up with occupancy permits, why not? What is our process? Those are the things we should be doing to helping our residents regardless of that neighbor is Washington that has, it's Washington students that are over extending the lease there with more than a few people in our community as opposed to any other family that will be here. So that's our own issue that we should be dealing with. Could it impact how that affects certain areas where that happens more often than is it affected by Washington making it in this case? But that's something we need to do and keep our own house in order, much like following our own regulations and looking at exception. Because the problem of that to me means that who comes in next wants exception? Why don't they get exception? And that's a fairness issue, we need to address it, we invest those in that. So I agree with that, that looking at, first, that there's a place that we can handle a lot of those issues. I'm, I know, so look to Washington University in those issues, that when we reach that factor, we're trying to figure out what's going on, that we can take each one, go to them and ask for, we can ask our neighbor, how do we find out, how do we know who's living there, what control? Because sometimes these are one person on a lease, we don't know who else is there. Does Washington have another location, this one was out, we have a neighbor that was, you have five cars out the front of the house, and I see you walking out every morning with backpacks. How we investigate, is there a way that Washington would come across this situation? And that's the kind of thing, look at the neighbor, ask another neighbor, see if he was able to come across this situation. And by my opinion, we have a high likelihood we can continue to do that into the future. I think I agree with Mr. Trucic about the impact of that study, that it's a crashing of the way, like the scene, or the pictures. So it was like, it doesn't make that sense when you look at that level, so we need to see all of the impacts, not just the projections. It's really important to take this, don't go too far away. After you, all of that before that, you need to hear that, you need to hear that.
I thought, we're trying to keep people just getting their product.
I thought, I thought I was hearing echoes, I thought it was good, so maybe it's just my hearing.
You gotta give me a sign a lot earlier on, a lot more, sorry about that.
Pulled tomatoes out of the throne? But that's, those are really my thoughts on that, that we're being continued dialogue with Washington University. We have issues going both ways, correcting that, working on that, and asking for what we needed. Mr. Close kind of, we have an answer, but there's many answers, at least Paulie, we did, we have to have that continuing dialogue, so we work together. Because it's, for Washington University, it's kind of sort of a little, we're, neither of us are going anywhere, so we need to talk, and that's, that is.
Mr. Spock, what's up?
Well, I'll put my two cents in, and what I would say is that Councilmember Clay did, in fact, say it correctly. And then the third word is a different aspect, perspective of effect of Washington. And I agree with Councilmember Car and, and in that, in that there should have been a plan, there should be something that we do. And even before I became a council member, one of the things that I always said, and my wife can attest to this, is that, you know, we may not make it with me, Washington, reveal their future plans or whatever, but what I've always thought, the problem with the city is that we didn't have a plan. And we needed to have a plan because, you know, I think they would come to the table, if our plan kind of conflicts or starts conflicting with what they're planning to do. I don't know if that works, but I'm just saying that that's something that I've always hoped the city in that, there was never a new city plan. So, but with this council, we have a plan, we're enacting a plan, and part of that is our full role. Now, what I would say to that, and I think Mayor Pro mentioned this, but I think that we actually need to look at more than just Washington bringing universities to look at our government on our, and I say that because Washington has a number of, a number of Asian students, but it's not just Washington, because also has but it's not just WashU, because also has a number of Asian students that come to University City. St. Louis U has a number of Asian students that come to University City. So, I mean, that's something that we need to look at. The biggest thing I will say, and I've said this to my colleagues, in the third ward, people may not be aware of, WashU has a housing program in the third ward. They incentivize their employees, teachers, and people that work at WashU by, uh, if you buy a house in the third ward, they give you, I guess, money, obviously say it that way. We have employees that live in the third ward. Well, of course, we know what's happening in the third ward, and I'll say this. We are on the outskirts, with we, with quarters, University City, the New York Art, Page Air, Wellesley, St. Louis City. And what stands between those unprotected, and I would say that because a lot of those communities and municipalities don't have the police force that we have. And what stands between them and WashU's employees and students is our role. I think public safety is the biggest issue with the third ward. And that's something that I think WashU should share in, because you're incentivizing your employees to live in the third ward. And I'm well aware of employees living as far east as southern, and I'm in that area. So I think public safety is the biggest thing that should be considered. And I think that's part of what we're asking all together here in this, in this meeting. So, yeah, that's my little point, and I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Schmosen?
Right, Mayor. Uh, I, I should very much agree with what Mr. Schmosen said about public safety and focus there. Uh, I guess it's, it's quite sad that I myself very clear when it comes to, uh, one of the base issues that I've seen over many years on the traffic commission is parking, parking, parking. And one of the things I think that, just to advance that, we, we, we need a little bit of effort nailed from the university on, on some things, I think one of the things we certainly need is, we really need to know in each of these buildings, how many vehicles are coming with how many students, graduate students or professors. One of the things I've heard from a number of constituents who have been long invested in their neighborhoods in the first ward here is the change in the character of the neighborhood down with the growth of Washington. There's some, that's somewhat to be expected. And it's not surprising, we have a number of graduate students in proximity to the university. It's over in, uh, Roseville, Nice. But it's somewhat, I think, frustrating, it's somewhat with the change, and I think it's been a rather profound change in the character of the neighborhood, who have these multi-family buildings that now have two or three people in them, which very likely could have two or three cars per unit, a six family unit that could be fifteen, eighteen cars. Or buildings perhaps built in the twenties that have spaces for six. And so it's somewhat frustrating that there has been this change in, in, in the character of the neighborhood, but those properties have also been moved from the tax rules. One thing I would also say that, that, the starting point for me, I think, is with our enforcement and the rest of Arizona, looking at what we've got, what we need, what we need to go with. Things that I would like to learn, you know, on down the line, is the section of the code as they relate to laboratories, what a laboratory is, and how many of them do we effectively have, both undergraduate and graduate in our residential neighborhoods? And, and everyone else?
Thank you.
You start?
Yeah, thank you. So first, I'd like to acknowledge that two members of that advisory board are present with us. Christine, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, two members of the advisory board are present with us tonight, Christine Almison and Todd Swonstrom. And so just, just in case that we can ask permission, we have any questions or need some clarification, they are, they are here. And so I, I'd like to point us actually, one of the arguments that I heard and, 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 forgive me if I, if I keep coming back to this. We don't have the information, so, so, Councilwoman Schleppson, do you know how many people are actually subsidized to live in Ward Three from Washington University? Do you have a count? Okay, you don't have a count? And when I asked, when I was first collecting in 2012, if we could put together a list of Washington properties, and on that, I was, I was asked the Director of Community Development, and she was told, build another county rolls. So that lack of, just that simple lack of cooperation kind of sets the tone. So, so I've often heard how much Washington University does for us. And I, I, without being too biased, I've always seen, I've seen people do things altruistically. And I've seen people do things in their own best interest. And I would think that on that scale, the, the relationship is not only unbalanced, but it's much closer to self-interest for Washington University than it is so. Sculptures in the park, it's a venue for their students. We now pay, and when it was established thirty years ago, Washington University paid four hundred dollars. Um, we, uh, they do help with our schools, and that provides a laboratory for their students. Um, there are some things that I believe that they have, our, our view gardens plan is really a plan very much for Washington University, and not necessarily for in, in both the city. And, and actually, that's laid out quite massively in the Subcommittee Three report. So I hope that everybody got a chance to read that, but also in that Subcommittee Three report. And I, for me, although the numbers are great, I don't think you have to, you don't have to be able to read the numbers of question to be able to read the, the English. And they, they actually propose assistance in, in this particular chapter, assistance that, that could be provided. None of this is, none of this is new. It's all in their road repaving, negotiated service fee, school district assistance. All of these things are on the table. I mean, I have a wish list that maybe isn't even, the pilot for me, the pilot is, is the top of, of that hierarchy. Uh, but there, there are other things that could be done. So you asked about strategy, yes, yes, we have asked. I, I know I've asked repeatedly to have, to be dealing with the parking, you know, what do we do with the parking? Um, with this parking gardens plan, the parking requirements were cut to nearly half of what they previously were. So in, in thinking of buildings, less parking is provided. And as, as many of you know, um, the, the cost of obtaining a permit to park on Washington University parking lots is pretty steep. And so the students often choose not to do that, and they park instead on our streets and in our lots that are designed for commercial activity. And they don't just park there and, and then move it later. It may stay there three, four, five weeks. I mean, their, their parking patterns are very different. So yes, I have, I have made asks, others have made asks. Um, there, there have been asks along the way. Now, have they been organized? I'm, I'm going to say to you that with the, with the election last April, things really changed. And, and, uh, this, we're, we're in a completely different set, and, completely different environment, really. And, and we all manage her together, and we have differences of opinion. So that wasn't the case before. And, and there were things that were happening that, that some of us didn't know about. And so I felt well by the agreements or deals with, for instance, when Washington University built their loss at the end of War Two and going into the city, there were two segments that were commercial. And the reason for going with mixed use, of course, is that the parking demands are so much less than if you go with strictly residential. And, and the settlement there, or the agreement there, was that Washington University would pay taxes on the commercial segment of their loss. Most of the, that commercial segment was in the city, but we had a small piece of the North Cafe. And what I found out, um, after two year, uh, two years after the, the building, was that, that we were receiving nothing, but the city had received sixty thousand dollars a year. And, and I don't know, I, I could speak with the county assessor, and he was, you know, very kind and generous. I think he, you know, he tried to smooth it over. I think the city should have been very clear as soon as that went online, you know, going to Washington University again to say, this is our agreement. You know, we want to make sure that you're putting this, you know, you're, you're, uh, working with the county assessor to make sure that this is, that this is done. So again, I'm, I'm really bringing it back to us. Because I think that, that we're the ones who are, in the end, responsible for those things. If we, if we have an ask, and, and, and I have, and some of those asks have been turned down, oh, I remember. But, but I think that, uh, I think that we haven't had a, uh, a comprehensive approach to this. And, and I think that this report lays out a fair, comprehensive approach to a lot of different things. So the, so as I said, my wish list might include some other things besides that. It would definitely include some jobs, bring some jobs here. Bring an incubator here, bring something besides a bedroom here. And it would also include some training, that's in their wheelhouse. I mean, they educate students, so they could, they could establish scholarships or some other things, not just a laboratory for the schools. So, so there are things that could be, that make them look great and really help out our community. And those are the kinds of things that I would also, you know, suggest that be part of the more comprehensive plan. That it really, really starts with us. You know, what is it that we are going to do about our own enforcement of code? And then what is it that we are going to do about, for me, taking what I think is the best report that's ever been produced in University City and, and applying some of that. And it doesn't necessarily mean that we go straight for, you know, for the top of that pyramid, but it does mean that we think about changing, and I'm, I'm going to say it, I know it irritates some people, but changing the relationship from a parasitic relationship to a symbiotic relationship. That is my end goal. So I guess, you know, I would ask other people what their end goals are. I, I want it to be symbiotic, that, you know, that we are both mutually benefit from this.
Mr. Schmosen?
Yeah, I was just looking at the, uh, page thirty-four of the student housing planning comments about what the future of student housing, like the law should be planned in other municipalities, which is a secret record, I suppose. I think one of the things that we kind of felt that for us to know was what exactly are the University City future plans? How many properties do they, is this a, a, a lot of, required? Because I think that is a real concern moving forward. What is, what is this going to look like in ten years, twenty years? What's Park We Garden going to look like? What's Rosa Heights going to look like? What do they seem to look like? Is it, is it still looking like the old Park We Garden's plan? Is it something else? Uh, so I think that, that is kind of important in this, in this process.
Mr. Blake?
I really like Councilman Schmosen framing things in terms of a comprehensive ask, because I think, you know, as we know, um, this body has power, we're collectively individually outside of these confines, or just council people kind of doing our thing. Um, and WashU is, you know, we're supposed to have with us in that kind of context where we're just kind of council people. But when we unite, um, and speak as a council, that's when we have the power, and that's when there can be real accountability attached to our request, or the conversation with Washington University. So I, I would hope that in this process, we do undertake what Councilman Carr suggested in this, I think, comprehensive ask, that is financially non-financial. And I think frankly, a lot of it would be non-financial. Some would clearly be financial, let's be straight about that. Uh, but I, I think that would allow us to have the real strength that we need, not in an adversarial context, let me be clear, we're fighting. Um, but I think we do need to speak as a collective body, because Washington University certainly, um, they are very clear with what they intend to do. Um, and without urging, actually, I think we'll need information. That's kind of good or bad, I think, that's just a decent thing. So I think we need to be similarly person, we can be that in the act of it.
Mr. Schmosen?
Thank you. So, so with all of, all of these other kinds of things that we talked about, I have been talking around this. We have, um, we have a central service institute to work, and we pride ourselves on, on keeping this, the quality of the service intact and, and making it innovative. And as more and more property is taken on the tax rules, uh, that makes it much more difficult for the actual homeowner and, and, and property owners, because they're, because of the survival scale for education. Education does not, or the Swedish does not have to lose their money. That means that, that we all give up the extra. And I got to tell you, I have some people that have to choose between flood insurance and food on the table. And you know, they're going, they need to pick the food on the table. And, and to penalize them, I mean, their house is probably the only one that has that. And in some cases, they're in the flood plain, and they cannot sell their house. So their, their wealth is absolutely frozen. And so I'm unhappy that we are continuing to pick up that, that, as you said, underwriting students' education. I think that at some point, and at some point, when this impact study will, you know, will clarify that for us, there needs to be some kind of relief here. Um, it, it's very difficult for us to ask for tax increases because our taxes are so high. I mean, that is, that is the, you know, the, the response I always get back. And, and when people find out that the school district is about sixty-nine percent of their tax bill, they're absolutely shocked. So that makes it even more difficult for the school district to get what they need. But for the city, we only get about eight or nine percent of the taxes. And so when we say, in all honesty, you know, we actually need a few more dollars, you know, it is really, in a sense, frozen. And that is because the burden has been shifted to the taxpayer. And that doesn't address the, you know, the economic problems with recession, or recoveries, or anything else. It is, you know, it is what it is. And so I think at some point, when we look at a comprehensive ask, we've got to take that into account. And we've got to decide whether we're going to view it through the lens of how many students have actually lived here in property that, that does not pay taxes, or are willing to look at it in terms of the estimated property taxes. I think it's easier to, to do the, the former than the latter, because somebody will always say you overestimated it. And then there's one more thing that you should all be aware of, if you are not. So, so occasionally, I hear that Washington University has put some has put some of these on the tax rolls and I applaud it, but it's usually because they're renovating the property. They go immediately to seeking and store tax credit. And store tax credit. And then, in order to meet the conditions of that, they must remain on the tax roll for six and a half years, but I don't see them remaining after that. And so, you know, again, it's that case of is the benefit shared or is the benefit otherwise? So I don't think we should be confused about the, you know, and it's a relatively small number of properties compared to what's owned because we don't get the bonus tax. We don't get those things that the other cities get.
Mr. Wilson? Thank you, Eric. Mr. Carr, did I hear you say something about Washington University's plans? Do we know what they are?
No, no, no. I was simply saying I'm quite certain that Washington University knows its plans and is probably going to be carrying them out. Yes, and to that, I would like to say that we need to know what those plans are as well. We don't know what they have. But we know, we want this city to look like in ten or fifteen or twenty or thirty years. However, we lack the insight that Washington University has in terms of what they view and that it's going to look like in the future and that we need to have this for this bring dialogue with them. And as Councilman Carr explained that we have many citizens that have to choose between paying their taxes and paying food for me. And as, again, Councilman Carr said, the top of the panel with the pilot, that I have to say that that's the direction I would like to go because we have to provide essential services to our community. And when we do not have those tax dollars to do that, that is a problem. And we can look to Washington University, and I think we should, for assistance in all of these other areas. But ultimately, I think, and I go back to Mr. Rose's intention, that that's where an impact study would have some bearing on this is to demonstrate exactly what the impact is on University City and what is costing us real dollars every year annually in our budget. Thank you.
Mr. Rose?
Excuse me, Honorable Mayor and the Councilmember, if I could just highlight what I would see as the next steps in this process. If I could just highlight what I would see as the next steps in the process. The first step is for a letter to formally go out to Washington University to ask for their participation on the task force as well as to share the cost of an impact analysis study. And that letter, probably best coming from the mayor with the approval of the council. The next step would lead to form a scope of the study. And this requires some discussion because I know that there is an interest in allowing the creation of the task force. But typically, you would want to participate with the task force in developing the scope of the study. So it's not just University City that's participating, but also Washington University would be participating in drafting the scope of the study. Now, alternative to the creation of the task force, I could simply work with some of the Washington representatives ensuring that they at least have input and went into what the scope would look like. I'd also like to do a very brief, two-week RFQ process. I'm not aware of any Missouri companies that would perform this type of analysis, but would certainly want to provide them. I know one company that does, but would want to provide the opportunity to do that. I'd also want to have the firm that's selected to use the data that is selected to update the July twenty-fifteen study. I think that some very hard and good work went into it. It would be good to have that information updated. Once the task forces are onboard, the goal would be for them to identify through the study whether there are negative fiscal impacts associated with Washington University. If so, make recommendations on how those impacts would be mitigated. And even if there are not fiscal impacts, also to provide recommendations on areas where the university and the city can partner. Those areas include, for example, safety, infrastructure. Both of those areas, economic development would be a third. All of those areas are important to the city and all of those areas have a mutual interest with the university. Once those recommendations are presented to the mayor and council, I believe that part of what tends to happen is not that people don't have great ideas, but a failure to execute those ideas. So I would see at least a small portion, if not the full task force, staying in existence for a time period to ensure that the recommendations that are accepted by the council would indeed be executed.
I take any questions that need answering. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Carr?
So as I heard you, this task force would be defining the scope and the questions that would be, that the consultant would be giving, is that correct?
Right, the task force would sadly be working with the task force to develop the scope of the study.
Okay, so I have a little bit of experience with that. We appointed a task force, gave them a deadline of six months, and it actually took a year, more than a year, to get that done. So what kind of a timeframe, and that's important, what kind of a timeframe are we living at? Because I can tell you that there's organizational time, there's a, I mean, I don't want to say it needs to be done yesterday, but we are sitting, you know, with a report already in three years and we haven't done it in every day. To me, it's costing, costing the people who live here.
You know, I think that, and I've never experienced creating a scope that exceeded more than thirty to sixty days. So I would say for this particular one, because there's already so much work done and you haven't chosen an idea of what you want looked at, this is probably no more than thirty to a time period.
And then how would you determine which of those members would remain on the task force afterwards to, and essentially confirm compliance or demand? I don't know how you would define it. Is that by a contract? So are we looking at some kind of a contract?
Honorable Mayor, yeah, for example, I think we'll have to flesh some of that out as we move forward with establishing recommendations. It will depend upon what type of recommendations are occurring. Is it something that's related to economic development? Is it something related to infrastructure? I think in part that might guide who actually remains on the task force if the mayor council decides the task force needs to remain at all. The other side of that is there are so many issues that emerged throughout the year where it might be good to have a group that's available to vet some of those issues through, where it is now again, type of issues. Parking, for example, is a perfect one. As well as if the university were to move with some sort of development, it would be good to have at least a joint group that can have those discussions. Not saying that it would in any way remove the responsibilities of staff, but perhaps augment and perhaps create greater communication so that we're not surprised as we often are by the developments that are current as well as the construction that occurs.
Well, and this will be my last question. Part of that surprise comes from the covenanted information. It's not because we can't sleep and instead of waking up and notice something. So, you know, so again, it's, you know, it's where we are and kind of what we are demanding. I don't necessarily believe in multiple layers of organization. We already have twenty commissions. It sounds like some of the things you want to look at also fall within the purview of traffic and plan and everything else. So I'm not sure. I guess I'm not quite understanding what would be the uniqueness of this task force? And what, again, this is my favorite, what's the end game?
Honorable Mayor, for example, the, what I'm trying to achieve is simply the creation of a greater communication flow. I think what happens often is that, you know, we find out at the last minute that Washington University wants to do X or Y. And then so we're always reacting when actually we have a group that would meet on an ongoing basis. That might improve that level of communication where we're not always surprised about what's occurring. That's just a, just a suggestion.
Mr. Wilson? Thank you, Eric. I was really happy to agree with Mr. Carr that we already have, we've already had this completed study that is very comprehensive. And I still don't see that I have a task force now to go over the results of that report of what you're asking. Is there not, and my concern is, my kindness of the essence, we need to move on this. Is there not another way that we could come up with questions that we could submit to somebody who seems to be able to do this impact study?
Can I stop you for a second? This is where I actually will disagree. Time is not the essence. This is a marathon. This report has been out for some time and it is no fault of the council members sitting here that this report got put on the desk. So now we've brought it back and we would like to do it right. And we would like to do it right in a way that it's binding from our community and binding from our neighbor, Washington University. And I think that if you say you've got the task force, then it's going to be imperative of this council to do an awful lot of this work. And I don't think that we're the right people to do that. I think we've got a tiff going on. I think we've got other things going that take our time. And to me, I don't want to do anything that unnecessarily makes this go longer. But I also will tell you that I am not in a rush. I am not in a rush on this. We have, I've been here for ten years. It's the first time we're having a totally substantive conversation about the relationship with Washington. And we're having, by the way, I think, in a very professional, respectful way, very, which I commend all of you for how this is moving forward. So to me, I concur with the city manager in that I know what the study did, that the study was also done by our citizens. And we need to just refresh and move forward. And someone needs to be the point, some group. They'll probably be chairperson, they'll be most important, all right? Those are the chairs, please. Task force should be most important. They probably got to be the point person. And that person needs to help move this forward. But the only thing I, and I know I just said about two pellets in a second word, I don't think this is a rush. I think this is a do it right and make sure. Ms. Carr said, what is, what is the word belonging to? What is it that asks? What is the ask? And I think the best way to move forward with Washington is to very methodically think this thing through as to what is the ask and what are the options in that ask? And granted, this flow document that we have did a great job on it. I think it's important for us to have an outside party that concurs or anyway, if it comes up with other things. But I would hope that we allow the city manager, if this is the way that we keep wanting to move forward, that we allow him that to move forward at the pace that he's comfortable with.
I just said one other thing. I kind of wanted to circle back to, I think it was the first point that Councilmember Carr brought up about our existing zoning code, enforcement of that. I guess one of us, totally unrelated to this task force, we have a relatively new zoning administrator in the department, has been very, very, very taxed and busy with many, many issues, particularly the redevelopment until process. But we have a person who's very relatively new, a zoning person who I think I'm thoroughly impressed with. And as it relates on the subcommittee thirty, fix thirty-four, with our zoning ordinance enforcement, I would be interested to have, particularly this section, for her to take a look at, if possible, and review some of these codes and start thinking about this. And I do agree, this is a marathon. I don't think we've really looked at this element as a city. What are our codes and are we enforcing them? Are we, are we doing what we are supposed to be doing and following the intent of the codes and zoning paths they were created? So I think there would be value in a review of that portion. Thank you. Mr. Carr?
Thank you. So I do agree, my colleague, Mr. Hales, in that, and I also believe that we can both walk at two doors at the same time. So while the city manager is taking a look at the task force and the impact study, I think we should be looking at compliance and zoning. And that would be my position. So I'm not taking anything off the table. Whatever gets us to the end goal is where we need to be. And this is where Terry and I disagree. I do think time is the essence because I think that when we ignore it, you know, when we ignore what started happening in 2007, and so here we are a million years later, and it is a vastly different game. If we've been paying attention, we might have made some different plans or taken some different moves. So I do think, I do think our attention is on the ball right now. I thank this committee for actually putting these things together, giving us something substantive to think about, not just at, you know, my opinion or your opinion. And I'd like to point out that Todd Swannstrom is one of the leading policy people around here. So I want to say that we have some very talented, highly educated people here. And these people gave their time. This wasn't just a bunch of my friends and neighbors sitting down. These were people who had, who brought to the table a great deal of expertise and experience. And so I'm not willing to, you know, to write that off. And, you know, for whatever that is, as you said last night, sometimes we just disagree. And so the compromise here that I would propose is that we both walk at two doors at the same time. If we go get zoning and enforcement as well as looking at impact.
And I don't disagree with our questions, but whenever you use the program, we, who's the we who's going to be looking at? Just so you know, I like that, but if you're going through planning and zoning and community development, I think you probably got an understaffed area that's working on all of the projects. And so at some point in time, this council has to come back to that we and decide how to progress because I think we can all say we need to do this, but I think we have to have the city manager say, I'm not sure how practical it is for us to put, by the way, was the responsibility all along probably shouldn't have been generated for us. I think what we'd all say, but now we're kind of coming to the point where it is the road. And we can say that we both should be up at the same time, but this we is going to be a lot of first-hand members who I think they say that their play is full.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor for example, I think one of the, if the council sees this as one of its finest priorities, what we'll do is bring back to you the work grant that has been considered and approved. And so we'll end up needing to likely make some modifications to pushing some of the projects, the planning and development. to that, pushing some of the projects that planning and development are going to have scheduled for this year, we can move those back to next year, but let us take a look at that and make some recommendations to you. But I would say that we are very lean throughout the entire organization.
I understand that staff is lean, but you have some people here that do have the time and the motivation to dig into it. And so I think, and I'm talking about, you know, what we would like to see in terms of zoning enforcement, things like that. So I'm not afraid to take another thing on, on my plate. And I know that there's others here that feel the same way. So, no, I'm not waiting, I'm not waiting for staff to do it, Terry, I've never done that. I've never had the opportunity to do that.
Mayor Protem, what I meant by that is that we have kicked off some of our projects. A good example, one that's going to take us to give everyone the time, is the vision process, as well as the update of the year, comprehensive plan. Along with that, we know that our zoning codes will need to be updated, etc. What I would likely recommend is that we push back, because that's going to be a major project, two hundred take for that department, and I'd recommend that we push that project back a little way out and focus more on this issue, since it seems to be a higher priority.
So your next steps then for us, we don't have a full schedule for tonight, so what are the next steps based on, for this body?
The drafting of the letter, which if you're in agreement with that, we will be drafting it for your signature, placing on the consent agenda. I don't think that we need to wait for that, but I will place it on the consent agenda for final council approval. I would also like, I guess, better understanding, I can move forward with starting to create the scope. I do believe it's important to work with the task force, giving them, giving it a finite amount of time to resolve what the scope is going to look like. I think having Washington moved into this process from the beginning is a good way to, to start it. So I also are moving forward with it, but I would ask that you give strong considerations to moving forward with the creation of the task force and the employment of the task force.
Ms. Carr, I would like to, Mr. Hales, please drive the apple. Thank you, Mayor. I would like to, I'd like to say that while Mr. Rose is proceeding with such a keen mind and certainty that we possibly ask him to submit to Mr. Mulligan to look at our zoning codes, to see if they need to be changed, and if there needs to be enforcement there, and if there are any things that need to be changed in our zoning codes to change the dynamic of, of the zoning codes, and perhaps that council may submit questions to you that you should even look at, and that if it's something that Mr. Mulligan doesn't feel that he would have the time, that we might look at outside council for that. Ms. Carr?
And, and I actually agree, because I think that it's not, I'm not, I'm not asking necessarily for, for our city attorney to look at something right now, I'm asking that we establish a subcommittee here to talk about the zoning laws at offhand. We seem to be running up against time after time, and then we can submit those, those questions or those, those suggestions. Because I need to sit here and wait for somebody else, I mean, honestly, we've been understaffed several years now, we have, we don't even have enough people for parking or things like that, so I'm not, I'm not sitting back, but I'm, I'm not going to, you know, to wait until there is time, because too much time will pass. I think this is something, I mean, the conversations I have with a few council members almost on a daily basis, we're involved around zoning and enforcement. And so those are things we could put together pretty quickly and, and submit, submit questions, and maybe even, you know, if they're legal issues, we could even go into a closed session about them. But I think, I think, you know, I'm always taking the position that I will step back and allow the time, you know, without my human eyes, allow the time for the establishment of a task force and the impact study, but I want the zoning, zoning and zoning enforcement to be looked at at the same time.
Well, I guess I don't, we can have a task force, there's questions, there's going to be one right before it, so I don't think we need to talk about that time, the office is no vote taken, I think we have that discussion in about the next few minutes, or we can do that as the council, it seems to be, you're really getting.
Are you, are you referring to the task forces? No, I was talking about the, I'm sorry, the subcommittee, which again is, I really do hope that my colleagues will take a pause and talk to, how many times we all say, oh, the city attorney do this, oh, the city attorney do that. I, I have the same passion that all of you have for these concerns, but I also know that we are placing a great deal on these folks, for the change of work plan, the change of work, the city attorney and outside council still, yeah, in other manner, it's probably just important, for us to enforce what we have with books. But if you'd like to have a subcommittee, then I would have it for their being created, and if I'd like to have some idea of what the actual purpose timeline and endgame will be, Mr. Mayor?
I think I agree with your comment earlier, that it's a marathon, but I think it is not to walk a little bit too much. I can run a marathon at a certain pace, and there's, our edgels can do it much quicker than I can, so I think what we need is deliberate speed to do the right job. That's, and I think that's what you're talking about, when you're saying, you don't, and the city manager's talking about, we have these folks here, do the right job, and then it gets to the one, so it continues in the right direction. I don't know about the subcommittee, I think we're jumping, I would pass it along to the city attorney, because I think we're trying to identify our policy considerations that are evidence within our ordinances and how they impact residents, and if those need to be changed. In that context, we're identifying the problems and solutions that we see when we talk to residents and how they work with our ordinances, and then at some point, we're going to get something that John or another attorney will look at to see if it meets the standards or if it would be a compromise. And then it could be coming along, we can ask them to say, what are our problems, really, what's the timeline? We've got to have the policy decisions we're making, what our residents want, do these ordinances, what they fit in, in order to be aware of their problems, I think, but I think we tend to do it at the same time.
Mr. Hales? I was going to say, so what we, in looking at our, our zoning, is this, is this a more comprehensive look, or is this just, what does Terry mean, Washington, is that?
Yes, yes. So this is my vision only, but there, there are things that we should be considering, and certainly considering the parking, as I mentioned, and the parking was cut in the adoption or the addition of the parking gardens plan to our two thousand five hundred and sixty four. We could also look at, at not just enforcement, but what is a, what is a dormitory, some definitions, how does that impact the neighborhood? And as well as any other kinds of things that, you know, that we're considering, you know, how are we going to absorb the sheer number of properties off of the tax law? I mean, you know, those are, you know, and how does that impact our zoning? And so I think those are, those are things that, that we should be discussing and bringing back to, you know, to the rest of the council. And while I agree that we should not remove the city attorney, there are some legal issues to, you know, to be asked about. I'm not an attorney, and you are, but I'm not sure that that's your, you know, your expertise. So at some point, that's, I think that's why my colleagues suggested that we submit them, submit the questions in writing, and so that, you know, it allows for those, those things to be answered, or maybe we can just, you know, get a quick answer, but the truth is that, that this is, this is not changing the zoning, I mean, this is not the broad overhaul of the zoning code. This is specific to the problem brought to us by having a, a very large, and in fact, the largest university, or the largest university in the eastern part of this area, including Illinois, so they, they have a larger number of students. And so it is specific to these problems. If we identify something else, I can't speak to that. My reason is not to be involved in the overhaul of the total code, I think that, that really resides with staff, plant commission, and others, but things that, the problems that we run into, that a few of us discuss almost on a daily basis, based on what our constituents are saying to us.
Mr. Hales? See, I, I actually think that this subcommittee does make some sense here. I've spent an important amount of time looking into zoning code, particularly as it relates to Washington, trying to understand essentially what we have and what is, what is weak, what I might be paying, what I might have questions on. And so I, I do agree with Mayor that, I don't think this is probably something that should have a work on it, that gets to the city attorney, I think it's a, probably certainly first, a discussion with the city manager about, and the rest of the council, these are, these are physical, these are the questions that we have, these are the specific sections of the code that we may have concerns about or questions about, and these perhaps, these are some things that we like to explore in terms of additional zoning, and then from there, broader discussion, and go to the next step.
I don't know, Mayor, council members, I was going to make a recommendation, along with the, 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 in particular, I think it would be good, at least for everyone, for us, the staff, to receive questions slash issues of concern regarding the existing code, allow us the opportunity to do, to conduct some preliminary analysis, send that analysis to the entire city council, and then you can determine what type of subcommittee would be appropriate, if, if a subcommittee is needed.
Ms. Carr?
Okay, again, I just think that you're putting a lot on the city manager, he's already running the impact study. I can tell you right now that I have identified three specific areas that need to be looked at, looked at, as I know, you know, and as we talk about, it's almost daily. I think, you know, for whatever this is, if the city manager would like to join the subcommittee, you know, he would certainly be welcome, but I think, I'm not willing to give, you know, to us on this, or give this away, let me just say, I'm seventy years old, I'm watching one of my good friends die, and it has, it has made a huge impact on me, to think that, you know, I'm of that age where things can happen. So, you know, so I probably have a bigger push than many of you do, but, you know, we, we, some of you are happy. So, so in, in, in any event, I, I do, I'm not, I'm not willing to sit here and say, well, six months, three years, oh, have we ever run to that yet? And I'm not asking you to, to produce a product for us, I'm asking that, that some members of the council get together and discuss it, like we do with council board, and then bring it, bring it back.
Well, the council will step on the, you must agree, but there, there are three members of council staff that are comfortable that we have a select person for each board to move forward. We are, I'm just, I don't see a real need, unless, there is no vote, I like to move this thing on a vote, so there seems to be a consensus on that, that we will move forward on that, very, very, very well for that, for signature, and frankly, this, as I start the letter, we can, once an open document, we can rotate it out to everybody, and sit in a, in a, in a, what other items to discuss this evening? Hearing, most of it will be adjourned. Mr. Hales, I think I was deployed, those are the papers, the six of us, say hi. Thank you guys.